Okay, it's five o'clock. I'll call to order the Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, October 7th, 2024. I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Beshin.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Kirchstoffer.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Ben Kempten.
Here. Thank you. Item three. Approval of September 9th and September 16th, 2024, Village Board meeting minutes if correct, and current corrections and mistakes if any. Jason and Tim. Discussion questions. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item for discussion and/or possible action, public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Do we have anyone here for public comments? Public comments. Seeing none, thank you. Item 4B, update from US, United States Congressman Mark Pocan's office. Welcome.
Do I have to push this, or is it already on? It sounds like it's already on.
Sorry, I'll just speak.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Beautiful. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. I won't take up too much of your time, but I did want to stop by and put a face to a name for those of you who don't know me. My name is Morgan Salley, and I am a field representative for Congressman Mark Pocan. My main purpose for attending tonight is to talk a bit about the direct impact that our office can have for you all and your constituents. So the first service that our office offers would be like a blanket of constituent services, where our casework team serves as a liaison between a constituent and a federal agency. We cover all federal agency casework areas at our Madison office, but a few examples of topics we might be able to assist with would be passports, issues with the IRS, Veterans Affairs, Small Business Administration, and the Department of Agriculture. Another service that our office can offer are letters of support from Mark. If there is an organization in the community applying for a federal grant, oftentimes Mark can send a letter along to support, a letter of support to accompany the application. Our office also has the ability to research potential federal grant opportunities for constituents. I am only able to submit grant research requests on behalf of a potential applicant, whether that be a city or village government, a nonprofit, or a small business. So if you have a constituent who is seeking federal grant opportunities, please feel free to connect them directly with me. I currently coordinate all of our offices' grant services, so if you have any specific questions about letters of support or grant research, please feel free to get in contact with me. I brought lots of business cards that I will pass out to y'all, so please feel free to get in contact on any of these items, but my main issue areas tend to be in either grants or outreach in general, but I can really field any request or question. And then finally, myself and the rest of our team in the district office are in frequent contact with our legislative staff and the congressman to ensure any community needs are communicated directly to Mark and also the relevant staff. So we're always happy to collect opinions or pass along local concerns tied to federal policy. That's all I have. Happy to answer any questions if there are any. If not, I will pass out my business cards.
Questions? No, taking that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Morgan. Item five, approval of vouchers in the amount of $2,486,179.44. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Look for a motion. Tim and Tom. Questions, comments, concerns on the vouchers. Tom?
I just, always when we get these long lists of incoming expenses, you always want to feel like you make a comment, like you read through them and it's all detailed.
Like you read the packet, right?
And while I won't go through them individual item by item, but kind of the big numbers do jump out, and I think one of the bigger ones was, and I think it was for, it just says South. It was on Street Construction 10337. I believe that was South Perry Parkway. Was that the?
That is South Main Street.
South Main Street, okay. And then the other one was 14441, which was JC Park. And are we, where are we at on that project? Are we close to completion on that, or was there stays?
Yeah, we're very close. In fact, pretty much the contractors have pulled off site. There's just some minor restoration going on, final things on the building and punch list items right now.
And then do we still have the lighting left on that as part of a phase three?
That'll be a phase three.
That's a phase three, okay. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hold on.
Yeah, just like Tom said, the big ones jump out and then the repeats jump out to me. So usually there's an explanation for this. I just want to know. On page 24 of the packet, 14131, there's two senior center janitorial services, same like amount, same number. Do you know what that is?
Yeah. That's a contract service we use for janitorial services individually higher, and that was split between the senior center and village hall, I believe.
Oh, okay, so it's?
One would be going to the senior center, one would be going to the village hall.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
What else? Okay, it's a roll call. Both, please.
Peterson.
Yes.
Beshin.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Ben Kempten.
Yes.
And Kirchstoffer.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Consent agenda items as presented. A, long-term stormwater maintenance agreement, wet pond located at 101 North Perry Parkway at the wastewater treatment plant. And B is declare public works, equipment, and vehicles as surplus for disposal. List is in the packet. Get a motion. Tom and Tim. Discussion questions on these items. Tom?
I just have one question on 6A, and who is the agreement with? It specifies that it's obligating the village, but I couldn't see who the actual agreement is with.
That's a great question, and it's something that we struggled with. Essentially, the agreement is a commitment from us, and the important part is that it gives Dane County as well as Wisconsin DNR enforcement authority. So it's really for the benefit of the Wisconsin DNR to see that somebody does have that enforcement authority over a facility that we own and should maintain.
Okay, thank you.
Any others? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Items, I'm sorry. Item seven, reports of committees. Items for discussion and/or possible action. A, ad hoc public art committee request to extend the duration of the committee for two years. We had a packet memo on this. Anything else to add, Martin?
No, I don't think so. The committee is looking to extend their duration for two more years to keep working on their programs that they've been working on.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to authorize staff to amend the ordinance for extend for two years. So Amanda and Jason, questions? Lynn, please.
I have a question, Martin. In your administrator recommendation paragraph, at the end of the first paragraph, you have written, "Plenty of funds are available to continue using towards future public art activities." Plenty of our funds, plenty of the grant funds, plenty of funds is a great phrase.
It's plenty of funds that are in the public art fund that have been accumulated through grants, donations, and interest off of those.
Okay, so plenty of funds given directly to this program are available. Great. Thanks.
Any others? Jason?
I'll just throw my appreciation out there to the committee. I am the village board representative to them. They allow me to help with administrative things because I have little to no artistic talent myself, but they do a great job of soliciting grants. Appreciate the Public Works Department and Jeff Rau for helping put up the sculptures, for advertising, for supporting local artists, for beautifying the community. Early date for you, the art fair next year is going to be June 14th, and they're just a group of fantastic talented folks. So glad they're, asked them if they wanted to continue, and they said absolutely.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, unfinished business. Item for discussion and possible action. A, agreement for land division improvements for Highlands of Netherwood Phase Four with Highlands of Netherwood LLC. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Jason and Tim. Okay. I know we have a gentleman here in case there are questions. Looks like Derek might have something.
I'll just add that I know Martin has included a memo in the packet here that should kind of address this. Essentially, where we're at right now is we're at with Phase Four development for the Highlands of Netherwood. There are a number of unique issues specific to this development that we've, that we as village staff have worked through with the developer trying to address public improvements necessary to serve that development. So if you have any specific questions, we're happy to answer it. Otherwise, I think everything is ready to go.
Okay, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you, Derek. Item eight B, review responses to new senior center and community gymnasium architectural services request for proposals and consider interview panel recommendation of OPN Architects. Staff recommendation, motion to approve of OPN Architects and authorize a village attorney and staff to negotiate contract for services. Jason and Tom. Who wants to run with this one?
I can take that on. Back in August, the board authorized the staff to create an RFP that went to three invited firms, architectural firms that responded in early September. On September 20th, they did presentations for a committee of six people. The written responses are all in the packet for you to review. The three firms did presentations for the committee, four of whom's members are in the room here tonight if you have questions. It was Tom for the village board, Martin, Elise, and I, along with Jeff Vine and John Bano. We evaluated those presentations along with the written materials, came to the conclusion that the best firm to continue on with a project design would be OPN Architects. That was a unanimous decision on the part of the committee, and I think a pretty enthusiastic decision on the part of the committee. They had really done a lot of their homework. They recognized that senior center design is not something that most architects have easily within their wheelhouse. They reached out to one of the best-recognized senior center architects in the country and got him to partner with them on this project. He's designed 130 senior centers in 32 different states. So we are pleased to recommend to the board that you consider OPN Architects for this project.
Okay. Anyone else from staff? Tim?
I was privileged to sit in on this committee, and I think that there was some concern officially, because OPN also designed the library, that we become, it starts to look like we're the, you know, OPN Design Center. They were by far, I think, the most knowledgeable and showed the greatest commitment to developing senior center-specific projects, the involvement of Doug Gallo, who is the national expert that we referenced here. It just, his experience, we're lucky that he's involved. There's rumor that he's getting towards retirement, and his future being availability would become questionable. But in the discussion, as we sat, he just threw off like three or four things, like things you probably didn't think about when you were talking about a senior center. It was just sort of like, wow, he really, he really does know this, what we need and what we're talking about. And I think it'll make for a tremendous new senior center and a really good design. So good characteristics for the whole project.
Anybody else? Tim?
I just had a question looking through it. I was having a hard time getting to what the financial cost was for each of the different proposals. I saw some numbers for OPN, but I couldn't find numbers for the other two. Do we have like something that summarizes the quotes?
I know Jeff Vine did put something together. They were pretty similar. There was a table I know he had pulled up at our interviews, but they're pretty similar. A lot of them are, for this stage, kind of more of a flat fee for conceptual design, and then for the full design is more of a percentage. So they were more or less apples to apples. As was mentioned here, a couple of the firms didn't include landscape architecture services, so their price looked a bit cheaper. That would be something that would need to be included later. But in the overall grand scheme of a project and the scale that we're kind of talking about, 13 million or so, the fees were relatively similar. I don't think Jeff Vine had any concerns about one of them being significantly more expensive or an outlier. So we rely our recommendation more on qualifications, product experience, things like that, team experience. And we can certainly get those, that table compiled that would be helpful. I know it's towards the end of
Do you know what page?
The proposals.
Of all the proposals?
I think each of them had.
I believe so. I believe OPN was was $45,000, not including the addition of Doug Gallo, which was at $15,000 on top. So I think it was about $65,000 for OPN. And then I think it was Bray was $34,000, but they did not include the landscape architecture cost. And then the Engberg was $48,000. So OPN's base was $45,000, but then they added on 15 for Mr. Gallo. So they were the most expensive, but nobody else had the additional services that lifespan brought on. So they were all in the relative 40 to 65 range.
Again, that's just for conceptual design.
Okay. Right, but it's an RFP, right? So I think if we are approving it, we need to see what those actual numbers are as we approve them.
So what's being asked of the board tonight is to accept the recommendation of the committee and to authorize the village attorney and staff to negotiate a final contract with the selected firm. And that, yeah, the contract would come back for final approval.
In the interim, while the contract would come back for final approval, we could also have at that time those numbers for the board to review.
Yeah, we can make sure those are all in
The more specific ones?
They're easy to see, apples to apples.
Okay, I covered two?
Yes, thank you.
You bet. Anyone else on this item? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 8C, presentation of 2025 draft municipal budget and begin village board review.
I have nothing to add and recommend its approval.
For three minutes.
Switching over. Should be on there now. Okay.
Alrighty. So, yeah, so here's the draft budget, and we'll do a presentation on some of the highlights here, and then perhaps get into some of the capital and debt and general fund portions of the budget tonight. I guess as far as just where we're at, the budget has all been compiled. It is balanced, and it's in pretty good shape. I know, I think we've had 11 meetings this year, village board meetings, where we've talked about either the 2025 budget, or budgetary manners, or the budget process, or related referendum conversations. So a lot of the stuff that's in this first part of the budget has been talked about quite a bit. So I'm going to try to go through some of the highlights, but I think one of the big things here is, you know, there's some concern that maybe we will have an unbalanced budget. We caught some fortunate breaks on a couple of things that I'll cover, which put us into some pretty good shape. And of course, there was some budget direction from the board earlier this summer. And so as we know, going through the referendum conversation, for the 2025 budget, departments held things pretty steady overall. And so we know that there's a lot of needs that were left off the table that, of course, are being discussed in parallel with the possible referendum. So, but as far as the 2025 budget is concerned, it's been brought together, it's balanced, and as I said, we're in good shape. The last big thing that we don't know right now is open enrollment for employees. Right now, we're going through that process where employees can change health insurance, and people may upgrade from single to family or from no insurance to family. And so those can be some pretty big hits if there's some pretty big changes, but we're not expecting anything, and we do have some capacity to take some of those things on. And usually, we're, this time of the year, we're still waiting on things like shared revenues and health insurance premiums, but we actually have all that stuff already. So we're in pretty good shape right now. And so for the next month and a half, it's really just quality control, double checking, triple checking things. There's always some things we forget to the benefit and negative on both sides. Some things get keyed in wrong, so it's just checking to make sure all those things are good. And, but overall, I think we're in pretty good shape. So we'll do this overview tonight and maybe get into the budget a little bit, and then 21st, we'll continue on through the budget review. That meeting, we'll look for, to get the board's direction on if the board is feeling like it's in relative, relatively good shape, because we need to get our public notice out for our public hearing, which will take place on November 18th. And in the intervening time, we can continue to have budgetary discussions. November 4th, we can continue the review if needed. And then at the 18th, we can, we'll have our public hearing and then do any final adjustments, and we'll look for the board's approval at that meeting. So this year, I'm going to get into a little bit more on the forefront here on sort of the nitty gritty of some of the new construction value and how our property tax levy takes shape, especially the operating side, especially in consideration of the parallel discussion about the referendum. I think we've talked quite a bit about some of the background here in regards to the limitations of the property tax, so I'm not going to get into it too much. But I think, I think this is the 14th municipal budget I've been a part of in my career, and eighth as an administrator. And so I think what I've found in my career is for elected officials in the public, they really want to know what's the property tax impact. That's, that's the, they want to know the end of the story, right? And so that's where I like to start, and that definitely informs how the rest of the budget process continues on after that. So for, as far as property taxes, as we've talked about, this for operating expenditures, the property tax typically covers 60 to 70% of the revenue needed for our ongoing expenses. And so the way that that all comes together is primarily based upon a variable called net new construction, and that is the value of new construction that has been created in your community in the prior year. And so for this year, for the 2025 budget, the net new construction value was $59,489,600, which is the highest net new construction value we've probably ever had under the levy limits. So that's a great thing. That's certainly helped us this year. And the way that that number feeds into the actual property tax calculation is they have you divide the net new construction value by your prior year equalized value, and that's how you get that percentage there, 3.27%. And that's the percentage that you can go back and look at your property taxes from the prior year and apply that percentage. And that's the new amount of property taxes that you can take in the upcoming budget year. And so you can see that's, again, the highest that we've probably ever had, the highest percentage. That's certainly helping us to balance our budget. And so the net new construction value at $59 million, that was the value that was actually created in 2023, because 2024 isn't done yet. So that is the new value in new construction. So again, you know, we've talked about it a few times, you can't get new property tax levy off of appreciation of existing value. You can only get it off of new construction value. And they also make you remove any value as a result of demolitions. So if you have value that's removed, you have to actually subtract that off of that value. So again, that's, we're in a good spot this year, 3.27%, so it's a good starting point. And so that number feeds into here. So when we go to determine where, what our new property tax amount is going to be for the upcoming budget, and this is the amount for, again, for ongoing operating expenses, we start with what's called a base levy. So you start off with basically your prior year amount that you had, and that's where you start from. And then you apply that net new construction value, that 3.27%. And so for this year, for the 2025 budget, that's a $182,000 increase to our property tax levy for ongoing operating expenses. So again, that's a huge, biggest that we've ever had. We're typically around that 150 and 130 mark the last couple of years. So that was, that was a huge help for our budget this year. And then I think the comparison here that we've talked about is against the CPI, right? So the last couple of years, 5.4 was the CPI compared to a 2.8% increase in this year's budget. The year prior, 7.7. The year prior, seven point seven compared to two point four three. So the the two things that I point out here is even if our village wasn't growing at all, we were the same population. All of our public services have, uh, cost. And of course, there is a, that cost is increasing typically, right? Because of inflation and especially the last couple of years. Employee costs go up, um, your utility costs go up, supplies, uh, services, that sort of thing goes up. So all else was equal and we had, we were experiencing this kind of inflation. We would still need the, our our property taxes and our primary sources of revenue to increase to offset that. Now, when you add on top, uh, that we're growing in population, so our service demand is increasing, not just with population, but also our, uh, community is expanding geographically. So our physical infrastructure is also growing. So not only do you have to, uh, maintain what exists and the inflation on me, on what exists, but then you also have increased demand. So in a year where you have seven point seven percent inflation and you're only able to grow your primary source of revenue by two point four percent, not everything is even equal because we're also growing there. We probably would have realistically needed like ten or eleven percent there to even try to keep up. So then you compound that over a couple of years of that occurring and that's where, um, we have some of the issues that we've talked about at length this year. Uh, and I know we've talked about this in the past too, but with the levy limit, there's sort of a saying of tax to the max and, um, basically take all of the levy that you're allowed to take because if you don't, you start to lose it and you effectively lose it entirely after, uh, a year. So, um, as I say, in the the bottom part right there, y- you may come into it with a a policy perspective of we really need to keep, hold taxes flat or we need to have a, um, decrease in property taxes this year. And that's just the, you know, the public policy that you as an elected body want to take. If you don't take all of your levy, as I said, it's it's effectively gone. There's there's very little recourse or easy recourse to get that back. And so when you start to think about, well, maybe I, we don't want to take it this year, but in a couple of years, we may actually need that because maybe something's going to come up and we want to use it. Well, that scenario is really hard to overcome for a lot of elected officials, that risk. And so what ends up happening for most communities is you just tax to the max. You just take everything you can get because you don't want to risk losing it because you don't know where you're going to end up in a future year. It it basically takes a lot of public policy choices right off the table for elected officials. So I wanted to show this year, um, just what the tax levy limit worksheet looks like. So this worksheet has to be filled out by every local government in Wisconsin. And it calculates what your levy limit is going to be for the upcoming year. So the the big part of it, um, most of the action is happening in this section A up here. And so, uh, it starts you off by, well, what did you pay? What did you take in property taxes last year? And then they do a little funny business here with personal property aid that I'll explain in just a second. So they start you off where, what did you levy last year? And then you have to take out a couple of things. There's some things with emergency expenses. That's like public disaster, that's disaster stuff. And it's a good thing that ours is probably zero. And then you have to take out your general obligation debt. So we've talked about this. Um, there's sort of two chunks of the property tax levy. Uh, there's this ongoing for operating expenses and then there's the amount that we levy for, uh, paying our debt service payments. Uh, and so you, uh, have to take that out when you're just determining the next year's levy. And so what we end up is with this five point eight million, which is this bait, which is the base levy that I talked about earlier. So that's where you start from. And then you get to apply your net new construction. And there's some stuff that you can do with terminated tax increment districts that will will help boost that. We don't have any of that going on. And so that's where you get this one hundred and eighty-two thousand boost. And so that's that's the amount that you get to use for your new tax levy for your upcoming budget. And then they do a little funny business here with personal property aid. So over the last ten years or so, the state legislature has been, uh, removing personal property from the real estate property taxes, uh, slowly. And then now finally this year, they are removing it completely. And so when they've done this, they have, um, wha- what's happening is there's a, uh, a certain amount of taxable value that's being removed from the overall property tax base. So when you don't tax personal property tax, uh, personal property anymore, there's value in the village's tax base that's being removed. And so the state legislature is, uh, thinking, okay, well, if we remove that tax value, it's actually going to cause property taxes to go up because there's less taxable value to spread your levy across. So what they decided to do was provide a aid payment. So, okay, we're going to give communities money to make up the loss of this personal property tax. And in order for, uh, municipalities to not basically double dip and just keep taking the same amount of property taxes and spreading it over the lower amount of tax base, they make you take a reduction in your property tax levy that's equal to the pay, the aid payment that you get. So, uh, we have to take a forty-three thousand, five hundred dollar uh, reduction in our property taxes because they don't want us spreading our levy over a decreased amount of tax base because they removed all of the personal property tax base from the tax base. So all of this to say that, um, we are whole, we are made whole because we will get this aid payment. But there's a lot of, uh, little funny business and that does end up kind of monkeying around with the tax, the the base levy every year because we have to make this subtraction by addition sort of thing that goes on. So we had a hundred and eighty-two thousand increase from in our property tax levy, but it actually looks like on paper, we're only going to get about a hundred and fifty-three thousand. But we're also going to get a forty thousand dollar aid payment to make us whole on that. Then, so that's, that ends up being your, your operating levy for the year, which is that five point nine five four oh three one. And then we get to add some adjustments in. And that's where we add, and then that's, when we add those in, we end up with this nine point seven million, uh, which is the draft amount of property tax we want to take for, uh, twenty twenty-five. So in the worksheet, uh, there are these two opportunities where you can go back to prior years to try to get some unused levy. So there is a one-year look back, which is this section B, which, um, does, uh, cap the amount that you can, uh, bring back if you didn't take it all in the prior year. So there is one exception there where you can try to get some money back for not taxing to the max. Apparently we left a dollar. It's probably just rounding. Um, we'll take that dollar. And then there's this five-year look back, which, um, we pretty much never will qualify for because there is a requirement on this related to the amount of debt service, um, that you are paying for. And, um, essentially you have to have a decrease in your debt service, uh, from the prior year. And our debt service has gone up every year for for many years. So we don't have this, um, ability to take advantage of this five-year look back. And then we have these adjustments that you can monkey around with your, your, uh, your levy. So the big one is our debt service. So that's the debt service levy for general obligation debt. So there is a three point five million. So then we get to add our debt service levy back into our levy of that amount. And then, as we've talked about over our last few months and in our joint meetings, we're going to take the levy limit exception to the joint fire in EMS, um, exception. And so we can take some more money there. Um, and that money right there, that two forty-two, three two four, uh, is actually base building. So we get to use that moving forward, um, year after year. Uh, and then there's a whole bunch of other things that are, some, some of them are more common. We often use the annexation one. We have annexations. And then some less, less common ones, including, um, up here is the increase, uh, due to a referendum. So it's time next year, maybe there's some dollar amount going in there. And then I know we've talked about too, there's sort of this, uh, subtraction. Sometimes when you create a fee, uh, you actually have to subtract, uh, the fee amount that you expect off of your property taxes. So there is the other side of the, um, equation here for subtractions too. So all this to say, there is a sort, an assortment of adjustment, adjustments that happen. Debt service is one that we have to make every year. And then there are some base building ones. And that's where you end up with that amount and the total amount. So when you get your property tax bill, you see a total amount for your property taxes of the village share. But there is a portion that is your base, which is for your ongoing operating. And then there is a portion that is for your debt service payments. But you can't easily distinguish that in your property tax bill. So that's what that looks like. Um, and so moving on to what the levy looks like for twenty twenty-five in twenty twenty-five budget. So, uh, again, we have these, uh, ongoing operating, places where we put, uh, the portions of the property tax and then we have, uh, debt service. So you can see that broken down here, uh, in terms of the general fund, which is basically everything we do except for the library, which is listed below, and then our utilities, which are not paid for by property tax. Uh, and so you can see the year-to-year change in the property tax for those funds. And then, of course, we have our debt service, which is our general obligation. And then, uh, our tax increment districts have some debt service that is also covered by the general taxpayer. And I'll talk about that in a second. So, um, what we're looking at is about a six hundred and eleven thousand dollar increase in the overall property tax, about six point seven percent increase. And of that six hundred and eleven, as I mentioned, a hundred and fifty-ish thousand for village-wide operating costs, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase for debt service. And then we have this, uh, levy exception for firing EMS and two hundred and forty-two thousand. So six hundred and eleven overall from this year. And one thing I just wanted to note here too, um, and has been noted before, but I'll note it again. And it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar increase or a hundred and eighty, really, when you take the personal property thing out of the equation. And, you know, we added this lieutenant's position. This is a great example. Lieutenant's position costs about a hundred and sixty thousand salary and benefits. Again, even with one eighty listed there, one position wipes that entire increase out pretty much. Before you do anything else, whether it's just one percent increase to your, your wages, uh, trying to keep up with utilities, services, supplies, all that inflation stuff that we talked about, let alone any growth and demand to your services. So so there's a lot of good things that broke our way, um, that we'll talk about and how we, uh, managed to, um, balance the budget this year. So as far as, uh, the property tax levy for debt service, here's a bit of a history on where debt services come, has come from and where we are today. Over the last ten years, obviously some pretty large increases over these ten years, um, due to investment in in some big projects. Obviously, the library, the village hall, and J C Park are up here in these forty percent, thirty percent increases. But I'll like say that the six point five percent is the smallest increase in the last ten years. So good job to this village board. And we can expect, uh, some of those increases to continue as we look at some of our capital plans. This year, about a two hundred thousand dollar increase. And then we talked about firing EMS, uh, at length over the last few months, um, and what that's all about. Um, but the big thing there is we're funding about a thirty-three percent increase in the firing EMS district's operating budget this year, primarily driven by a new, uh, full-time firefighter and paramedic and then increases to their existing staff wages, which are two priorities that they've had for a few years now. Uh, and we're able to take advantage of this exception, uh, for that thirty-three percent increase. We obviously contribute the highest portion of that, being the highest, uh, hardest partner in that. And that increase is about two hundred and forty-two thousand, three twenty-four. You can see the increase in operating from twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, and so we're taking care of some of their priorities and we have a tool to to do that within the property tax. For the tax increment districts, as I said, the general property tax levy does support some of the, uh, TIDS debt service, has supported it, uh, in recent history, but that's actually, uh, getting a lot better. So the, the tax increment districts are starting to be able to support, um, their own costs. And so, uh, in twenty twenty-three, uh, tax increment district five was able to support itself. Uh, and now this year, tax increment district four will be able to support itself. And so only tax increment district three needs general tax levy support. It's got about four or five years left of some debt service that will continue to need support. Um, and then at that point, it will start paying back the general fund for all the support it has. Uh, and I think, so obviously that helps on, uh, the overall tax levy. So being able to reduce, especially on that TID four one, taking a hundred and sixty-six thousand or a hundred and forty thousand over the last couple of years right off there, that helped immensely. Um, and so I think the, uh, as I mentioned here in these two paragraphs with the, the TIF districts, there's the debt in those districts is as a result of, um, some major public infrastructure projects. So street projects, um, you know, North Main Street was a project that was done a couple of years ago. That was in TID five. We did some, um, projects in TID four, some inters- intersection projects on Jamesville and Perry over the last couple of years. So those are projects that would have occurred otherwise, even without these districts in place, right? They're, they're infrastructure projects that needed to happen. And, uh, with these districts in place, what the village is able to do is capture not just the village's property taxes, but also the school districts, the tech colleges and the county's property taxes. So the village is able to collect all of those funds when it's in a TIF district. And they can use those funds to pay for debt service within the districts. So if those districts didn't exist, the village would have about six hundred thousand more to add on to the village's debt service levy and would have had to be supported by the general taxpayer. But because we have these districts in place, we're able to capture those other taxes and put them towards these debt service payments. So it is a tool that you are able to use, uh, for things that you probably would have otherwise done and had to pay for. But you're able to tap into other jurisdictions, uh, taxes to pay for it. So that helps drive down potential impact on your property tax levy. So those things are moving in the right direction. And we don't expect four, five or six to need general tax levy support moving forward. And as I said, three will will soon be, will soon be done here in the next couple of years. So moving on to, uh, the levy, uh, from the levy to what it looks like for property tax rates and how it impacts individual properties. Uh, I have some information here on just, uh, the differences between assessed value and equalized value. And that's, um, important this year because, uh, for the first time in a long time, we did, uh, what's called a maintenance year for our assessed value. So historically, going back many years, we always, at least fifteen, we, uh, would have our local assessor, um, do a market adjustment to all of our properties uh, every year for fifteen years. And so, um, the assessed value and the equalized value matched pretty closely. But this year, uh, we changed the contract for the assessor. So now we do it every other year. So this year was a maintenance year, which means most people's property values stayed the same as they were last year to this year. Unless you had some new construction or some modification to your, to your property. So what that means is it's really easy to do kind of a straight, uh, across comparison from the prior year to this year. And I have some information on differences between assessed and equalized value. And just the history, last ten years' history of what those have done. As you can see, the equalized value is what matches, uh, a market. So you can see there's a seven percent increase in equalized value. But assessed value is what is locally assessed and is what impacts your local property tax. That was only a two percent. So, um, and that was all due to new cut, new construction value. So when we take those numbers and we, um, apply our property tax levy, we get a property tax rate, uh, per one thousand, uh, dollars of assessed value. That's about just a hair under four percent increase. About three point eighty-five percent increase in the tax rate. about 3.85% increase in the tax rate from this year to next year. And remember, that is just the village's portion of the property tax. There's also the school district, tech and county, which is not included here. So we're expecting, based on our property tax levy and based on the assessed values, about 3.8% increase. And then when you look at what that does for different home values, and again, this year, we're able to basically do kind of a straight across the board comparison because most people's property values will stay the same. So you can easily compare it from year to year. And so looking at about the median value home, it's about an $85 increase in the village's portion of property taxes. And as I've had in the last couple of years, comparison, property tax rate comparison against the 41 or 42 different combinations of city and village property taxes. So this is inclusive of school district, county and tech. And of course, Oregon, as we know, has been towards the bottom, has been towards the bottom historically. So a $400,000 home is assessed $957, less than the average in Dane County and $3,500 less than the highest property tax community. So obviously, there's a little bit of nuance there when you think about what a $400,000 home is in Oregon compared to maybe Black Earth. You know, there may be some differences there, but a pretty good comparison of of property tax rates. And then normally here I have spiel about red flags for the future as far as some of the things we've talked about as far as things are being left off the budget, needs are being left off the budget. And we're aware of those and we're talking about those. So I didn't include those, include any of that information here this year, but just included Ellers's projection of where revenues and expenditures are going, all else being equal. And Dave Ferris was here a couple of meetings ago and talked about how just inflation starts to eat away. If we want to try to maintain what we're doing, it starts to eat away at what we're what we're doing. When our general fund fund balances start to get eroded. And so that's where we are. And that's what we're talking about as part of the referendum. So any questions about, I guess, property taxes, the property tax for the budget and and everything I just discussed?
Apparently not.
All right. So I'll get into just some high level things on the the actual budget itself. And again, I think the things that really influence the budget are things that we talked about quite a bit over the last 11 meetings of financial management discussion. So I'm not going to revisit these things. We obviously adopted this resolution, which gave direction as far as employee wages, as far as as far as building budgets and that sort of thing. I think the couple of things that I want to highlight in this section is our health insurance. Well, let me highlight up here first. So we did talk about this as far as the 2025 budget resolution. But for next year, we want to do a market review of our compensation plan again so that we're making sure that we're keeping that plan up to speed. It'll have been three years since we did our our last study. So I do that. So for health insurance, this is something we haven't previously discussed. So the village is part of the state health insurance plan. And essentially, employees get to pick from three different health insurance providers that participate in the plan. And for about the last 10 years, the villages contributed 85% of the premium with employees picking up 15%. And early on in the budget, Lisa had noted to me that if it was possible, if we could make it work, this would be making an adjustment to that contribution, might be a good thing for employees. As we've seen over the last few years, the take home pay as a result of the health insurance impact has kind of been eroding slowly but surely over the last couple of years. So and we do know a lot of communities in Dane County are at the 8812 split, which is the actual maximum that you can go up to. And so we've certainly heard that from from staff and from departments about that comparison. And so if there is anything we could do to try to get back to that. And it turns out that the cost to do that was relatively low, about 25,000. Some of that gets split out to utilities. So if we were able to accommodate that, all considered in the budget in terms of wages and in terms of trying to keep budgets flat relatively, this would be a nice thing to try to get into the budget if we could. And so it was, we were able to do that based on a number of different things. We had some capacity to do that. And so we're proposing to change that contribution rate back to 8812. And so you can see for an employee, if you're on the GHC, you get about 416 bucks back in the year. And then for Core CW people, you get about 600 bucks back. So again, we've seen some of that being taken away from employees as these rates have gone up. And I think we're we're pretty happy to put forward this proposal that gives a few dollars back to employees that way. Another thing I wanted to to highlight here is shared revenue. This is probably where we caught our biggest breaks. So shared revenue is, of course, that second source of revenue for our ongoing operating expenses. When you take the tech property taxes and shared revenue together, you know, we're closing in on about 90% of the revenue that we use for ongoing operational expenses. So this is a huge one. So a couple of things happened here. So last year, of course, the state legislature adopted a new law that substantially changed shared revenue. It was the first time they've really substantially changed it in really a generation, about 20 years. So they created this, what's called the supplemental county and municipal aid program, which provided us with $292,000 in this year's budget, the 2024 budget. And then this program, along with the original county and municipal aid program, would be tied to state sales tax performance. So we weren't really sure what to expect out of that, but it ended up providing us with about $10,000 more than the prior year, which is okay. We'll take it. So that added $10,000 in there. But actually, the biggest thing that had an impact on the budget was this portion of shared revenue called utility aid. And so properties that are owned by light heat, power and electric companies, so your Alliance Energies of the world and transmission companies, they are exempt from local property tax. They don't pay local property taxes. There is a a program the state has inserted themselves into that basically provides a payment in lieu of. So they have some regulatory framework, there's some calculations that happen. And then it spits out a payment in lieu of taxes for these types of organizations that have property. And then we get an aid payment based upon that. So probably the biggest surprise for us was that ours jumped from 14,500 to 71,143. So it was about a 60 to 70,000, $60,000 increase. And it it looks like why that happened was the, it's called the net book value of assets for these organizations in Oregon increased from 2 million to 11 million. We're not entirely sure what all of that is made up of. We do know that there was some substation work that occurred last year by Alliance. So it's possible that those assets increased that much. But so that's spitting out a much higher number and we would expect to carry that number moving forward. So that was a huge surprise and a welcome surprise and helped, as I said, about 56,000 in additional revenue for us. So that was nice. One thing I also note too is on shared revenue, there is the the other component, which is the expenditure restraint program. This is a program that effectively encourages local governments to restrain their expenses in their general fund and some other spots too, to CPI plus growth factor. And so we we do have that payment this year for the 2025 budget. But it's looking like for 2026, we'll we'll far exceed the that factor. And so we would expect for the 2026 budget to not have about $58,000 from that program. So we'll start that budget with a little bit less than what we have in the 2025 budget. And normally, if we can try to make that that payment or that that program threshold, we we will. If it's close, we'll try to to get the budget in a position to be able to take advantage of it. But it's just, it's not even close. And sometimes that's what happens and you just have to try to budget around it.
That's that's just a state set threshold limit that that we have to meet too?
Yeah, yep. So it's a CPI factor plus growth factor for your community. It's 5.2% for to qualify for the 2026 budget, based on your 2025 budget. And we're something like 7 or 8% right now. And that would mean we'd have to cut 3% out of our budget. And it's just, what are you, where are you going to do that? It's just not even close. Especially on top of, as we've talked about, we're leaving things off the table here. So and that and that happens. I mean, it's not uncommon for for every local government. It's just, it just works out that way and you try to build around it and and make up for it in the best way that you can. The other thing too, as we've sort of experienced over the last few years, is an increase in our general transportation aids. So those went up $77,000, about 10% increase. So that 77,000 is another welcome addition to our our revenue for ongoing operating expenses. This has actually gone up over the last five to six years by 85%. In 2019, we were at 446. We're now expecting 826 for the 2025 budget. And that is due to a couple of things. Those aids are based upon a few factors. One is the road, amount of road mileage that you have in your community. So of course, we're adding roads due to new subdivisions and that sort of thing. So that helps. But the biggest factor is they look at how much you're spending on your own road maintenance and construction. So this this aid is tied to a basically a sort of a if you help yourself, we will help you sort of mantra. So we have done a very good job over the last six years of doing one major street reconstruction project per year, which boosts that calculation up considerably. And so because we're doing that, that that factor is increasing. And so you've seen the result, which is an 85% increase in revenue over these last six years. So the important thing is, is to, I guess, sort of invest, keep investing in yourself, keep doing these projects in a thoughtful way. And then this aid program will continue to to deliver. So now the risk there is, of course, if you don't, you you'll start to see a drop off in that aid program. And so it's important to to stay on that and be aware of it. And then I think maybe the last big factor here was to take into consideration was investment income. So we've talked about this too. We've seen a pretty big increase in our investment income as interest rates have gone up over the last couple of years. You know, we're looking at 207,000 already this year. We had 282 in 2023. We have right now plugged into our budget 80,000 to expect for. So we're using 80,000 investment income to cover ongoing operational expenses. We think it's pretty conservative. Now, interest rates are starting to go down. They're starting to go back the other way. So we may see a decrease there, but hopefully not substantial enough to be any lower than that 80,000 mark. So we're being conservative there. I think we could probably reasonably expect that we'll end up with more than 80,000 in in the 2025 budget. Again, that's a good place where we can use some of those funds for things that come up that we don't expect. The green box partnership was a good example this year. The referendum work was another example. The lieutenant's position that we added. So these these funds that where we were a little conservative, we end up with a little bit more. We can use those for for other things. And if all else, we can transfer them to our capital equipment and building funds where we can use it to replace equipment, vehicles and that sort of thing. That way, we don't have to take out debt for those smaller cost items. So of course, the inherent risk is you rely too much on the investment income for ongoing expenses and then you don't have enough. And then you have to figure out some other way to fund your operation. And then the last thing I'll note here is we are still holding some contingency. So we have $68,700 in contingency. So that's money that is available in an ongoing basis. So we have, we're above what we're we're expending right now. So we have more revenue than expenses in our 2025 budget. But of course, we mentioned, we still have open enrollment for health insurance. And of course, we are double checking our budget and all of our numbers and that sort of thing. So that number could go closer to zero, back the other way. So it's a good spot to be in at this point of the budget. Any questions on any of those items?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the packet. It's page 291. And in there on, I believe it's item number six. We maintain existing services and accommodated inflation, inflation and other budgetary increases on a and no only staff increases, but then we held the external entity requests at 2024 levels. Is the external entities, is that primarily OCA Media and the youth center?
Yep.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yep.
I guess when OCA did their presentation, they did present a zero base increase, but they also included a request for us to consider a 3% adjustment on their their the contribution, which I believe when I went back and looked was $3,890.36. I don't believe that it directly impacts the budget because it does come from a separate fund, which notably is declining, but but not this year. The other thing, I couldn't find what the impacts were on the youth center. And I guess I'd like to, if we can restore those to at least a some reasonable level, I'd like to see those.
Sorry. So the youth center, we still have, we kept them the same as the 2024 contribution, right? So it's 17,000 is in there for OIC is in the budget. And they're going to come actually to the next meeting and do their annual presentation of how they're doing. Certainly, if they have some additional requests, they could consider it. They didn't offer any as far as as part of the budget process when they were informed that it would be held steady. But certainly something we could sit, could consider for OCA. As you said, we we have a separate fund that primarily funds their contribution. And the source of that revenue is cable franchise fees along with a state aid program that is gradually replacing those cable franchise fees. And as you mentioned, Tom, the the issue in this fund right now is it's operating at a deficit. And it started operating at a deficit last year. And so the the cost of the contribution to OCA Media is starting to outpace the the revenues that we have coming in. So right now, what we're looking at is probably by about 27 or 28, that fund will run out of money. And so then we'll have to decide how are we going to handle any increased requests to OCA Media? Because now they'll be part of the general funds consideration of the resources that are available there in lieu of all the other village services. So so to to your point, Tom, So um, so to, to your point, uh Tom, absolutely. The, the fund has three thousand dollars that it could contribute in twenty twenty five to increase the, the contribution to OCA for that year. It just accelerates the, the de- the depletion of the fund that's inevitably gonna occur in twenty seven or twenty eight.
And it was a question that we are including in the survey. So we're gonna, in twenty twenty six and going forward, we're gonna have substantial community input on, on what we wanna do there and how to, might give some direction on that. Uh, on how we can handle some of those uh longer term issues we have with that particular fund. So um I guess, uh I know that both the Youth Center and OCA Media run on what I would call anemic budgets. And they are frequently scraping by and they both provide some important services to our community. I guess I would uh advocate for uh including some, certainly, you know, including the, the request that uh OCA made. But then uh considering some kind of increase for the Youth Center in an appropriate level.
I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board wants to do. Uh, for direction.
Others on this subject?
I concur with Tom. I think that we've seen over time that OCA Media does a fabulous job and on a very anemic budget as you described. Um, and I, I do think that the Youth Center would be able to offer more programming if we were to be able to increase their budget as well. But what, I guess you said we're gonna hear from them next week?
Yep.
Others? I see a man in the lobby.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I, I agree that OCA does great work, but I think maybe the bigger question is how do we solve their funding issue for the next ten years? You know, that maybe that's a separate discussion.
Uh, but you would agree for this year to increase it?
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as. Lynn, please?
Yeah, I am on the same um thought process. I guess I want to be cautious because we haven't had a presentation from the Youth Center, just to wait. Um, you had mentioned a very important word that, you know, a reasonable ask is something that we should consider, but we don't know what their ask is yet. And I don't wanna get too far ahead of ourselves to say that we'll absolutely fold in whatever increased request there is. Um, obviously, they're very important and there's going to be increased costs. We all know that. But I think waiting until we get all of the, I mean, for OCA, we have that information. I feel comfortable with that. I just wanna hesitate to, to clump both together until we have the information.
And I concur with Lynn.
Okay.
Good with that.
Sounds like we're.
Uh, other, other uh questions or concerns for, uh, as to what Martin has said up to this point?
Just, I'll just uh say on the, the OCA and OIC. So OCA, I, I don't think, I don't see an issue with adding the, the three thousand in um for their request for twenty twenty five. There's funds in the, the, the cable TV uh fund available. And the only caveat I would say is again, there's a longer term um structural issue there that is going to need to be addressed at some point. Um, for OIC, I would, I would say um yeah, pausing until we hear from them is good. Uh, we could very well come to the next budget and, next meeting and this, this number's gone, right? If we're at a zero and there's no more money to give. And if you're gonna give them something, you're gonna take it away from something else. Um, so I, I would caution to just wait and, on that until we get closer to the end of the budget.
Yeah, I think we're agreeing on that.
Yes.
I just didn't wanna leave it out as an external. Uh, we asked them to come with a budget of zero and they did. A funding request as far as what we've received from them to this point. So they may not have considered that they could even ask for anything more.
Okay.
Uh, Candy says I'm supposed to do the whole budget tonight, so no. All right, I'm gonna do uh, I think a couple more things here and then I think we'll be good for tonight. So uh capital funds, um, we've talked about capital for the last three months. I don't, there's nothing surprising here that we don't already know. This is just taking uh the, the projects and purchases that have been identified in the twenty twenty five year of the ten year plan and moving those into the actual twenty twenty five budget. Um, I have some description here of the different funds, the capital funds that we uh account for. Uh, I think the big things here are, we're potentially, we'll begin borrowing for construction of the Senior Center in twenty twenty five. Um, I think that's contingent upon a couple of things. We'll see how far along we are actually are in that process as far as design and if we're ready to do that. But also um, as with the library project, um, we worked with Ellers to um establish a, like a three year borrowing plan for that project. And um started having a little bit of those discussions with Ellers this year about the Senior Center. And so I think the actual amount, um, if we are ready to borrow for construction in twenty five, uh final amount TBD. Um, so there's a little bit more work there, but we have a number in there for the budget at least. Um, equipment and building capital, again, um, a lot of uh vehicles, machinery, um, some computer IT equipment. The solar project here in Village Hall, we've talked about is, is here. Um, so everything um there. Uh, one thing I wanted to note is uh on our Parkland Fund. So this uh fund is monies that we accrue from uh dedications, uh fees in lieu of Parkland dedications from developers. So they pay us uh money instead of um dedicating Parkland. Um, can be kind of hard to use these funds because we're not always acquiring land for, for parks. We're usually getting them dedicated. Uh, so there's a pretty good chunk of money in there, almost five hundred thousand dollars. Um, so for uh twenty twenty five, so we recently um, we've entered into this deal to sell two forty nine North Main Street to a developer. We're gonna carve out a little portion of that property for a park. We still owe money on the acquisition of that property. And so now that we are dedicating a portion of it as a park, we are able to use some of these funds to uh put towards the debt payment on that um original debt payment of that property. So that's, that's a, a nice little um way to decrease the debt burden there. Um, park stuff, um, a couple of projects in there, some park maintenance stuff. Um, next year for street improvements, the big project that we have targeted is North Oak Phase One. We have a nice state grant for that as well. And then Phase One Design for Wolf Street and uh slash MM, uh which is that portion between uh Janesville and the middle school. We talked about pedestrian safety there. So design for uh that project will get it underway next year. Uh, so that is capital for twenty twenty five. And then here's all the different line item budgets. That, any other remaining questions on capital that I can answer?
No.
Yeah, one question. Um, just speaking of street projects, where do we have um Highway CC Jefferson on the calendar at this point? Do we, no one can expect that?
Twenty seven, twenty eight.
Twenty seven, twenty eight?
Jefferson Street.
If I'm going by memory.
Jefferson Street, twenty seven, twenty eight. Yep.
Shoots these scores.
Twenty seven, yeah. Twenty seven is the design, twenty eight is the construction. Yep. Yeah, that was um, I think we had talked about it. So we have basically three county village joint projects to do. There's this Phase One of Wolf Street, which got the higher priority due to some of the pedestrian concerns. That one will get knocked off in twenty five, twenty six. Then out here on Jefferson Street is the twenty seven, twenty eight. And then Phase Two of, of Wolf and MM, which goes beyond the middle school, south is twenty nine, thirty. Got that all programmed in there. Anything else on capital? All right, debt service, again, something we've talked about quite a bit over the last three months. Um, so this is just taking really what we're already obligated to spend for debt service payments uh and putting it into the twenty twenty five budget. Um, so you can see this is our existing general obligation debt. Um, and at that three point three, three point five million for twenty twenty five that we talked about. Um, and that's a tax rate of about one dollar ninety cents. So when we talk about the tax rate for twenty twenty five being five dollars and thirty four cents like we went over, uh, there's probably just a hair under two bucks of that is for just paying the village's debt service. So I think the median home in Oregon was what, about two thousand, two hundred bucks for property taxes for the village's portion in twenty five. So just a little bit under a thousand, about eight hundred bucks of that is just from debt service. So about a third of it is debt service. Um, and we've talked about where we're going as, as far as debt over the next uh, you know, till twenty fifty two. Uh, as far as our capital plan is concerned, so that's what that looks like and the impact there. Um, and then we've looked at our debt capacity uh over the next uh ten years. And so for the twenty twenty five budget, really what we're concerned about is um the principal and interest payments that we already are obligated to make in twenty five. And that's housed here in the budget and it's about, oh, for almost four million dollars. Um, and um most of that is paid for by property taxes, but we have some other sources, impact fees, special assessments, that sort of thing coming in. Any questions on debt that I can answer? All right, and then I think I'll cover uh general fund as well here. So general fund, um, as I mentioned, that expenditure restraint um program. So we're looking at um an eight point five percent increase in general fund expenditures this year. So as I mentioned, five point two was the factor for expenditure restraint. So we're, we're considerably over that um for a variety of reasons. So um overall, in terms of all revenues, all expenditures, we're up o- uh about eight fi- eight point five percent from this year. Um, so the next few pages go over a, all of our different um explanations of all of our different revenues. Uh, I guess the thing that I would highlight here is um, again, the uh property tax makes up sixty percent of our revenue for ongoing operation expenditures, sixty eight percent, including the wheel tax and room tax and some other things that we do with taxes. And then when you add in the intergovernmental revenues, we're up to almost ninety percent of our entire operation is funded through these two sources. Um, we went over shared revenue and taxes in, in detail. One thing I wanted to highlight um is uh some funding for the Senior Center. Um, so back in twenty nineteen, this is a Dane County grant to um the Senior Center. Uh, we talked about this quite a bit at length last year when we were going through the um, the negotiation with the other town partners. So in twenty nineteen, Dane County's grant to the Senior Center provided seventy one thousand, three hundred and eighty bucks to the village. And this year, we're for twenty five, we're looking at a hundred and thirty three thousand. So that's been a great, great growth there, eighty six percent increase over this last six years. And that's attributable to, I think Dane County has prioritized it, but also I think Rachel's done a great job advocating uh to Dane County to get those dollars increased for Oregon specifically. So just wanted to highlight that. Um, and then we move on to our other sources of revenue, which again, these make up very small percentages of uh the revenue that we use for ongoing expenses because these sources are often unpredictable and unreliable. Licenses and licenses and permits rely on demand from the public, which may or may not happen from year to year. Uh, makes up about four percent of our revenue. Nothing uh significantly changed or expected there. Uh, fines, forfeitures and penalties, uh you know, these are tickets. This is about one point two percent of our revenue. Um, again, nothing uh unexpected there, but again, that relies on being able to, even violations occurring or, or having the police officers uh being able to do that proactive law enforcement and prosecutorial success of those violations as well. So not necessarily always reliable or predictable. Uh, public charges for services, um, again, this ma- this makes up two point six percent of our revenue. Nothing significantly changed there, here from this year. Um, the streetlight charge, I reviewed to see if we need to make any adjustments there in terms of expenses. But um I think we'll have, um, it'll be right on still for matching that revenue source to that expense that we have. Intergovernmental charges for services, uh two point three percent of our revenue. Um, one thing I wanted to point out here was um uh our mechanic in the Public Works Department has um been able to provide service to the Oregon Fire EMS District. Uh, we charged just at their straight time for that, plus any materials. Um, the district's found that it's um very competitive compared to taking it to a shop. So we've been able to um use our mechanic to do that and then charge them for that. So it's become a little bit of a source of revenue that we're um adding in this year. So that's a nice little new thing there. Um, miscellaneous revenues, um, anything that doesn't fit anywhere else, about two percent there as well. Investment income is under this revenue source. We talked about that earlier. Um, and another thing I'll highlight here, and this is under the Public Works Department. Um, they took over the metals dumpster down at the village's brush site from uh the baseball club. And uh that's actually started to be a little bit of a generator of revenue as well. So we got nine thousand, six hundred bucks in there for, for new revenue. So that's a nice little thing too. Um, another thing I noted here, lease revenue from our Village Hall tenants. We updated those leases la- last year, trying to get them more in line with um uh commercial rental uh prices and that happens over the course of a few years. Um, so those um amounts are increasing as well, which is a nice source of revenue for the village too. So those are, oh, look at that picture. Look at that. So uh any questions on general fund revenue sources? Gone over that. All right, then I'll cover expenses really quick. Um, I don't think there's anything surprising here. We asked departments to hold their budgets in check as best they could, accounting for inflation, accounting for small increases to wages. Um, so there's nothing really um too new to uh go over here. Um, just explaining what all these different funds are as you're going through them. Um, I think the one thing that we always highlight from year to year is just the increase and decrease of elections costs and things get attributed to the clerk's budget versus the elections budget. So you kinda see some up and down there. The police budget, one thing I wanted to highlight there, and this was another place where um we were considerably helped from a number standpoint um in the budget. This year, we had a couple of longer tenured officers who resigned. And of course, those were backfilled with um newer officers who are at the lower end of the wage scale, the union wage scale. Um, and so accounting for the differences in the twenty four budget for those longer tenured officers to the twenty five budget, which now has these newer officers, um, there's some, some pretty significant differences in costs for those salaries. Like twenty thousand dollars apiece for, for two positions. Um, and then your new accountants, um benefits costs and, and those fringe costs. Um, you know, you're looking at the tune of about fifty to sixty thousand dollars and, and, and um saved money um from twenty four to twenty five. So um even with the, the new lieutenant's position and then um accounting for increases, um, the growth in that, those uh, those wages for police was considerably less than anticipated just because of those, that difference. So that, that helped significantly on a number side. As we talked with chief, it doesn't necessarily help on an operational side because you're, you're losing, you're losing those uh years of experience and that obviously can hurt. Um, but purely from a number side, um, it definitely helped the budget. Um, fire protection, we talked about the levy limit increase, the levy limit exception there. That's the big difference for there. Um, Public Works, I think the, the wonky thing that always happens in Public Works is um we attribute, we allocate time um based on what they actually do. So we try to do our best estimate in a budget for where their time is going to be spent. And then throughout the year, they allocate their time to what they actually did. And so it's always kind of a hit or miss on what they're actually gonna do. And so it's always kind of a hit or miss on what they're actually gonna do. I mean, they may be doing a lot of snow plowing, um, and maybe doing not at all some years. So we try to do the best and then that's why we come at the end of the year with a budget amendment to, uh, correct all those allocations. But, um, that's kind of where you'll see some, maybe some different percentage increases and decreases across a lot of their different funds. That's, uh, all I really had to note on, um, general fund stuff. So I guess one note on fund balance. I think we talked about earlier this year with, um, the possibility of needing to use fund balance to balance the 2025 budget if needed. And of course, we don't need to do that, um, based on how things turned out. Um, and so, um, we're hopefully able to keep our fund balance exactly within where we want, where our policy is, you know, between that 25 and 35%. Been hovering around that 31, 32% the last couple of years. And I would expect we'd be able to, to maintain that moving forward, which is a good thing. And then everything I just talked about, um, is here in the numbers, um, which you can look through, so. Any questions on general fund?
No. Okay. Thank you, Martin.
Stop it there.
Thank you.
Okay, item nine, new business known. Item 10, reports of village officers, department heads, consultants, just for information only. No action by the village board will be taken. A is the village administrator report. Questions, comments? B is the financial advisory report, annual report of potential refunding of existing bonds.
No, so this is one of the services that Ellers provide, uh, provides us every year. They look at our existing debt, see if we could, um, refinance it. And to decrease our costs, and, uh, there is none that are viable this year in their opinion. Um, and I think the last two years, I've said this, and I think it'll remain the same maybe for a couple of years, but all of our debt obligations have been refinanced up to the year 2015. And so from that point up until, what, the last maybe year and a half or two years, interest rates were like 1, 2%. So most of our debt is, is tied up in like 1%, 2% obligations. The last couple of ones we've done here have been in the 3, 4, 5%. So we may get to a point here in a few years where it makes sense to refinance some of the ones we recently did. Um, but those ones that were from 2015 to 2021, I doubt we're ever gonna get interest rates lower than that, so.
No doubt. I, I guess I would note that as investment revenue declines, the opportunity increases for re- for refinancing. So there could be some loss, so if you lose income from the revenue from the investment, you're gonna have opportunities to decrease your lending costs, so.
Absolutely.
Good point. Okay, uh, 10C, Director of Public Works Report, letter from Pelletary Waste Systems for increase in service rates for 2025.
Pretty self-explanatory, just, and this has been incorporated into the budget numbers.
Okay, no actions required in this item. 10D, Director of Community Development Report, update on UW Madison Planning and Architecture, 2024 through 2025 capstone project for conservation parks, master plan.
I can share a little bit about this, Phil. Um, so as you might remember, uh, Lynn, she so often does find some wonderful opportunities. Um, and, uh, helped redirect us towards a program that UW Madison, uh, the Landscape Architecture Bachelor's Program does. It's a capstone project, so typically one student per project. And we applied in August to be a site for a capstone project and we're selected by a student. I think the Dane County projects are pretty competitive because they're very convenient. Um, so we were pleased that, um, student Morgan Hack, uh, she's from Sun Prairie. She selected our project and actually last Tuesday, I think it was, um, Jeff and I took her on a tour, Lynn got to meet her briefly, but, um, all of the parks kind of everywhere from Alpine to North Bar Oak and Jefferson to, um, Netherwood. Took her on the truck, got out of the truck, did some hiking around and some stomping around in the, in the prairie and stuff. And, um, she took a lot of great notes, a lot of good pictures. She certainly knows her, uh, her plants and bee species too. She was impressing us with her. So she, um, she's at a conference in DC this week, but she's actually gonna be zooming into the park board meeting briefly tomorrow night, um, just to introduce herself and kind of give a little bit of an overview over, um, her, her plan for the course of the year. So the next slide has, um, versus this part of a class. So we're gonna kind of see her checkpoints that, um, she'll have as due dates for her professors and things like that. But, um, this is the very broad overall timeline, so it'll go across both semesters. Um, there'll be community engagement, you know, whether that's focus group interviews, surveys, um, community workshops, walking tours, things like that kind of sprinkled throughout. So we're kind of working on the details of when those might be, but we'll certainly be holding her hand through those as she gets some experience working with the community. And, um, but I think we've given her a good lay of the land, a lot of, um, historical images and maps that Jeff's pulled up and then, um, just the tour, I think was really helpful for her as well. So happy to answer any questions, but the cost for the village is very minimal. She said really, other than a couple of minor printing costs and whatever, um, event costs we might have or, um, depending on what kind of engagement events we do. Um, otherwise, it's really just, she's doing this for credit, for, for class, so experience. But I think based on the other projects we've seen from past, you know, this every year for decades, um, a really high-quality product, lots of detail at the end. So hopefully it'll be a helpful jumping off point for, um, whatever our next step is for these parks.
Great. Great opportunity. Thank you, Lynn.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. As I do often bring, uh, new ideas and projects, I put these projects on the backs of Jeff and Elise more often than, uh, everybody else. So I just wanted to extend my gratitude to them for, um, the work that they're doing with Morgan because although, you know, she is a resource that we're able to utilize, um, Jeff and Elise are gonna need to be there to help her and guide her. And so their commitment to this, um, is commendable because if we were just hiring, uh, a consultant to do this out of the gate, you probably wouldn't have to do all of this. So I genuinely appreciate the effort you guys are putting forth for her and for us.
Happy to, thank you.
And she's not related to Nick Heck. Oddly enough, I mean, you know, for as many people as Nick is, uh, related to and everyone else in the village with the last name, not related.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item 10E, Village Clerk Report, November 5th, 2024, general election information.
Isn't election coming?
I just learned last week. We're all getting together.
So, yeah, um, the clerk's office is getting quite busy, um, with phone calls and voter, you know, inquiries. Um, the hot topic seems to be in-person voting, which starts October 22nd. So we're going to run October 22nd through the 25th. We're going to be open at Village, and all in-person voting takes place at Village Hall. So that's 101 Alpine Parkway, anybody that's watching. Um, so the 26th, the 22nd through the 25th, it'll be 7:30 to 4:30. And then the 28th through November 1st will be open from 7:30 to 5:30. So we're gonna extend some time. And for all of the board members too, there's, um, flyers back there. And for department heads too, you can take to your, back to your offices. Um, and the, the memo in the packet should answer any question you have about the election. But as always, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call the village hall, so. We're looking forward to November 6th. Or maybe December 6th.
Thank you. Item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, updating meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Village Board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. Carleen?
So, uh, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee met last Thursday and we practiced our, uh, facilitation of the pilot community conversation. I think the invitation and the form for anybody, any staff or trustees or committee and board members is ready to go. And Candy, you're sending that out, correct?
Yep.
Candy will be sending that out. We really hope that a lot of folks will participate. It will be on Tuesday, October 29th at the library and at 6 o'clock. So, uh, please participate, give us feedback, help us to refine this so that we are ready to do it in 2025 with community members. Thanks.
Thank you. Any else? Oh, Elise, please.
One other event that's not on the October calendar yet, and Melissa's gonna kill me. Make her protest again. Um, we just set this last week, yeah. She won't kill me, it'll be fine. We set this last week after the packet went out, but for the downtown master plan, uh, we, we have a poster and social media post that you'll start to see. And, um, I can email to all of you if you want to share in your own social media or, or post elsewhere. Um, but Monday, October 28th, at the senior center from 6 to 7:30 PM, we'll have a open house, uh, review of some of the concepts that, uh, redevelopment resources and Studio GWA have, um, put together based on feedback and data, um, that they've gathered over the, the summer from the community. So looking for feedback on those concepts, do we hear you correctly? Anything we missed, things like that. So it'll be a drop-in type event, so people don't need to stay for a full 90 minutes, but we'll be available during that time. And, um, thank you to the senior center for hosting since they're, um, an important downtown public space. And, uh, happy to answer any questions, but that just got scheduled a few days ago.
Did you say 6 o'clock?
Six to 7:30, correct.
And since we like Elise so much, it's already out on Facebook as an event, so you can share it for me.
Awesome, thanks Candy.
Anyone else for announcements? Uh, please, Lynn.
I just wanted to kind of go in the past really quickly. Um, the village outreach program had a coffee and connect session, um, in September. I think two weekends ago, thank you, um, that Carleen and I attended. And we got lots of feedback from community residents who wanted to ask us questions and, um, bring some concerns our way. Uh, we've sort of funneled those to the departments that they need to go to or committees that they need to go to. Um, but I just wanted to thank residents for that. There is another one coming up mid-November. So as you're seeing things about the budget or you're seeing things that we're looking into the future to do and you have opinions or ideas or questions, um, we will be at the Kickback Cafe on November 16th, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. 11B, future agenda items. Okay, item 13, as our business is concluded, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all.